Call to order the regular meeting for the Ashland Board of Commissioners for Thursday, February ninth, 2023. We'll start with an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we ask and invite your Holy Spirit to come into our meeting today and give us divine wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions on behalf of our city. Your word says in everything, "Give thanks, for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus." And so, we give thanks today for our city, and we ask for continued growth and progress in all of our departments as we provide needed services for our citizens. We pray your blessing and favor over this Board of Mayor Commissioners, as well as our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. And we pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Let us stand and salute our flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Want to welcome everybody to our meeting. We'll start with commissioners' reports. Commissioner Blant, would you like to start?
Sure. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting. So, first of all, I'd just like to mention, thank you very much to everyone who supported our event on Saturday with the Highlands and Dancing with Our Stars. It was, we survived it, and I'm here. But it was, it's a big event for the museum and raised a lot of money. Commissioner Clark and the mayor were there and emceed the event. We appreciate that very much. But the Highlands is a museum that's making ways. Governor Beshear issued lots of help to a lot of our local organizations last week. We appreciate that very much. But they chose to do it at the museum, and that was a very good showcase of what's happening there. So, we appreciate that. Tonight, there's an event at the museum at 6:00 PM, part of the Chautauqua series. So, anybody that's, just to give a reminder about that, that's a really, really informative, a great, great series to attend. Ashland Change is having a Black History Month event at the Mill on February 25th, 5:00 to 9:00 PM, having a few different activities, trivia. Jonathan, the artist, is playing, a friend of mine, a really great artist. So, there's that event. And I'll just mention, it's been, it's been a long week for me. We, and this is public information. It's nothing confidential. But we had, my company is dealing with a cyber attack issue, and it's been not the best week of my life. I'll say that. But it makes me, and just to let you know, the caliber of folks that we're dealing with here, they usually attack public school systems. And so, that tells you kind of what you're, what you're dealing with. But it's, it's really, obviously, I've known what can happen with those. But exactly how it can affect an organization is, is all too real to me now. So, but if you remember, a couple of years ago, this commission made the commitment to address that for the city, because guess what? Cities and municipalities can be affected just as badly as companies can. So, we invested in working with VC3 to shore that up for us. And, you know, there's always things to work through with those relationships. But, you know, I'm glad because it makes you start thinking about other parts of, you know, different groups or organizations you work with and what they may have to deal with if that happens to them. So, I'm very glad that we've done that. But it's, it's definitely a challenging, challenging issue. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spriggs.
Hello, everybody. I'm happy to be here today. I hope you all are happy to be here, too. It's nice to get out without an overcoat today, but who knows what that wind's gonna bring, right? Well, I want to say congratulations to my fellow commissioner, who knew that he had happy feet? So, maybe we need to give him a nickname now for happy feet. But good job, Commissioner.
Sad hips, though.
Couple things. Gravy Bowl is this Saturday at the Transportation Center. Tickets are $10. It opens at 10:00. Come and get some of that gravy. I'm telling you, the fire department's in there. People in this city can make great gravy. So, please come and enjoy. We have a band. The Mill has a bar there, so it'll be a lot of fun. So, come on down. And actually, three people up here are judges. So, how about that? Have their spoons ready to go, right?
Ready.
Have spoon will travel. That's Marty.
And our cholesterol medicine.
Yeah, and their cholesterol medicine. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Pub Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, is having a Vietnam Veterans Luncheon, and that is March 12th at the Transportation Center at 12:30 PM. If you know, it's Vietnam Veteran, Vietnam Air Veteran. If you know anybody or have somebody in your family, please tell them about this. It's free, and we just want to honor these heroes. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Goot.
Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks. I want to welcome everyone. Last week, we had, we were blessed to have Governor Beshear and Rocky Atkins and Senator Webb, Representative Sharp. The city was presented $719,000 for replacement of an aging water main. And that, Boyd County was also awarded some awards as long as far, and Catlissburg also, along with 13 nonprofits. And so, we were thankful for that. The next day, we came into chambers here, and Senator Webb and Representative Sharp were presented the KLC, the Friend of Kentucky Cities Award, in the chambers here. And our friend, J.D. Chaney, caught me at the door right there and struck up a conversation with me and started bragging about their great attorney. Said, "We got a, we got a top-notch attorney," and said, "She's fearless," and said, "While I was sweating bullets in one of our trials, she was methodically dismantling the opposition," and said, "One of the best, if not the best attorney in the state." And I said, "Well, who is she?" And he said, "Well, her name is Mindy Barfield." I said, "You mean Mindy Goot Barfield?" That's my sister. And so, I was very, very proud of that, that compliment that he paid my sister. My sister is a good lawyer, and she's in Lexington. She's a former Fayette County Bar President and was voted one of the top 10 women in central Kentucky. And so, being from Ashland, that's a bragging buck for my sister. And I want to convey that message as I go out to the high school today and tell them anything is possible with hard work and determination and commitment as we give our FBLA, it's FBLA Week. And we're going to give a proclamation to all the kids and future business leaders out there at the school today, this afternoon. The other thing is I met with the Ashland Ministerial Association, and I also met with the representatives from the hospital. And we're going to resurrect the National Day of Prayer. After it's been on kind of a hiatus for the last couple of years from the pandemic, it's been, you know, in small, you know, kind of virtual meeting, and it's going to be at the Transportation Center on May the 4th at 8:00 AM in the morning. So, it's usually a record crowd. Last time we had it there, it was about 250 people. And so, it's a great day of National Day of Prayer on May the 4th. The next thing, Little League signups are going on right now, and you can get applications at Mike's Sporting Goods up here. The season starts before you know it in April, but the tryouts are May the 3rd, and the applications can be obtained for T-ball, softball, and baseball, and for all ages at Mike's Sporting Goods. The last thing is, meet me at the Gravy Bowl, 10:00 AM, down at the Depot Saturday. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
We had, the world, if you haven't had a chance, please go by and look at the sign on 17th and Carter for the home of the World War II Honoring Heroes, the Veterans Wall is going to be. This week, we had a meeting, a committee meeting. There were about 30 people there. I think there was a lot of excitement in the room, a lot of ideas passed around. Committees have been formed, so we are moving forward with plans to, on all fronts, to get this done. So, I just wanted to say, come be a part of the planning committee or give us a donation. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, commissioners, I am going to read two proclamations as we did last year. It's that time of year again for the recognition of our school counselors and our FBLA Leaders of America. So, whereas the Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda is a nonprofit organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee in 1942, and whereas this organization has grown to encompass over 250,000 members and advisors nationwide in middle schools, high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private business schools. And whereas FBLA PBL inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership experiences. And whereas, members perform community service activities and strive to build a student's understanding of the realities of the modern business world. And whereas, FBLA PBL Week 2023 will focus on creativity and unity, FBLA PBL is a great vessel to promote the spirit. Now, therefore, I, Matthew Perkins, Mayor of the City of Ashland, do proclaim February 5th through 11th, FBLA PBL Week in the City of Ashland. And Commissioner Goot's point, he will be giving that to the FBLA group this afternoon. And we've got a dual week going on here, so a little bit different dates. But whereas, school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, and these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the education process that enables all students to achieve success in schools, now therefore, I, Matthew Perkins, Mayor of the City of Ashland, also proclaim February 6th through the 10th, National School Counseling Week in the City of Ashland. And we will also send our Ambassador, Commissioner Goot, with that proclamation to our school counselors. So, we appreciate them, and we appreciate Commissioner Goot carrying those off for us. With that, we'll go on to our city manager.
One last thing. Congratulations to Commissioner Clark. Her first grandbaby.
Oh, yeah.
So, I sent, sent her son a text and said, "Buggle up."
Very good.
Congratulations to them.
All right. We'll try this again. City manager.
Just one note. I think everybody's aware of the possible windstorms that are going to be happening this afternoon. We'll make the necessary calls in Central Park to close that as necessary. One other thing I'd like to announce is the city is looking at doing a pilot program at the recycle center to allow businesses to pay a monthly stipend to utilize the recycle center. It was not something that we did when we originally opened this recycle center. We have 20 bins down there, and when we first started the recycling program, they, and they got picked up twice a week. So, I think the capacity of 40 bins per week. And we were maxing out most of the time or getting pretty close to it. Over the past nine weeks, we've averaged a total of 19 of those bins being filled up. So, we'll, we'll initiate this on a trial basis, on a pilot program basis, if you will, Mayor, and we'll, we'll see how that affects. But we'd like to be able to max out the capacity that we have down there.
I'd like to just comment on this. I think Commissioner Blanton and others advocated for recycling, and we also are promoting a business-friendly atmosphere for the city. And I think this pilot project is a symbol of our efforts to try to enhance the services that we provide our business community. So, I'm excited for you to implement this, to see how it goes, and hopefully, it'll be a great success.
But you'll see announcements for it on, we'll do it on Facebook, and maybe I can talk to Daily Independent to get some help from them also.
Since we're talking about that, I will say that I notice a lot of people who don't recycle throughout our city. I see cardboard boxes and things like that put out with the regular trash on their trash day. Could we think of some way to let people know, "Come use our recycling center"?
We have recently put out information on Facebook. I'm not sure, did we send out the flyer and the bills recently to finance? Do you remember?
It's been a while.
We still need to do that also then. But to your point, Commissioner, pre-COVID, we maxed that out, and it hasn't been happening. I know it took my family a bit to get back into the routine of it, but there's no reason why. We've got a good center. We've got capacity, and folks can use it.
Well, I have new neighbors, two new neighbors in my neighborhood, and, you know, they need to know. So, there's.
And it's out in the schools, because I've been collecting from the schools, and I just now collected from Crab. And so, the teachers, the after-school programs are all into it about recycling.
That's great.
The word's out.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty. We're moving on to the public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out the inquiry form with, and leave with our city clerk for distribution in proper city department. Would anybody like to come forward at this time? All right. Hearing done. Old business.
Mayor, one housekeeping matter. Before we move to old business, I'd entertain a motion to receive and file the agenda.
Oh, my apologies. Yes. Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
So, move.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to?
That's good.
That was it? Okay. All right.
All right. So, old business. Item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Safe Harbor of Northeast Kentucky, Inc., the sub-recipient of $20,000 for operating costs from the 2022 program, your community development block grant.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Safe Harbor of Northeast Kentucky, Inc., the sub-recipient of $33,044.21 for employment, education, and case management from the 2022 program, your community development block grant.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Community Assistance Referral Services, Inc., the sub-recipient of $49,186 from the 2022 program, your community development block grant.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky adopting the revised job description for the position of Secretary I and II in the Department of General Government, Division of Mayor and Commissioners, and the Department of Risk Management of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky adopting the revised job description for the position of administrative clerk in the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted in ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky adopting the job description for the position of administrative assistant as a replacement for the position of receptionist in the Department of Community and Economic Development and amending the authorized positions of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Employee Assistance Program Management Agreement between the City of Ashland and Ashland Hospital Corporation, DBA Kings Daughters Medical Center, adopted by ordinance number 190, series of 2022.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to submit an application to FEMA for the assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $350,000 for the purchase of a four-by-four brush truck, attack truck for the Ashland Fire Department, and if awarded, authorizing it 10% by the City of Ashland, 10% matched by the City of Ashland, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents relating to said grant.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute a ticket reseller agreement between the City of Ash, Kentucky and Flix Bus, Inc., designate the City of Ashland as its non-exclusive agent, allowing the City of Ashland to sell bus tickets at the Ashland Transportation Center.
So, move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Boyd County Sanitary Landfill, Inc., Rumpke, for a suitable landfill location for the receipt and disposal of compacted garbage and refuse rubble and rubbish collected by the City of Ashland for a period of one year in an amount not to exceed $19.74 per ton for the Department of Public Services, Division of Sanitation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the consent agenda, a resolution to the City of Ash, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, improving the course of actions presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of February 9, 2023.
So, move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business. Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky amending the authorized positions list of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended, increasing the number of authorized positions for bus driver from four to five.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ash, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Tribute Contracting and Consultants, LLC, for the waterline replacement project, Phase Two, US 23 Water Main, in the amount of $1,767,577 for the Department of Engineering.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Just make a note here. This is part of the award that we received last week, and we've known about this for some time. But we appreciate the state's efforts to guarantee that we have these funds available to make sure that we can get this waterline replacement project done. It's symbolic, again, of our commitment to our citizens that we continue to upgrade and maintain our infrastructure. So, I'm really proud of this project and the future projects we have ahead. Any other discussion? All in favor? in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland Hack Company in the amount of $71,963.10 for the purchase and maintenance of six Regentless Chlorine Analyzers for the Department of Utilities, Division of Water Distribution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to submit the fiscal year 2023 grant application to the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the Ashland Bus System for operating costs, preventive maintenance, paratransit service, maintenance payroll, and capital expenditures, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the implementation of this grant.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Franklin H. Hager and John D. P. Burton regarding encroachment for a freestanding sign for timeless reflections located at 1527 Central Avenue on the city's right-of-way.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Is this a lighted sign or?
Not that I recall from the sign application. I don't remember it being lighted. You should have a copy of it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorized in directing the mayor to submit an application to FEMA for the assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $226,500 for a mobile air trailer with full station and thermal imaging cameras for the Ashland Fire Department, and if awarded, authorizing a 10% matched by the City of Ashland and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents related to said grant.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be going into executive session.
Return to 101. Only potential litigation was discussed, no action was taken. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.